So next, councillor Prutza will be addressing you.
Thank you very much, once again, Tom. I want to thank Stephen as well. So now you understand and you see what some of the things we go through down at City Hall when we go through all of the budget documents and all of this information. I've seen this presentation now several times, so I think I have a little more familiarity with it than many of you. But here's what that budget does for us. And I don't believe I ran for office to do that. It, for example, closes or reduces the hours that John Booth Arena is open. And it locks out a whole bunch of people. It takes out of the 17 daycare centers that we have in this area, it puts 60% of them at risk of closing. Once we lose those places and those spaces for the kids, I don't think we're going to get them back. It'll be very, very hard to get them back. It contemplates reductions on a bus line, for example, on many bus lines, but the one that is unkeenly interested in is the 36th bus on Finch Avenue. Busiest bus route in the city. It carries over 40,000 people during rush hour. We just added some buses a year and a half ago because we didn't have enough, because the buses are running full and they're bunching up. I don't think that the way you grow and you make the city better and you make this community stronger is by taking that bus route and actually reducing the service on it. I don't think that that's the way for us to go. You know, Stephen used language that we're all becoming very, very familiar with down at City Hall. There was one part of the presentation where he said "the welcome policy enhancement." I'm going to try to translate that for you. We have several community centers in this neighborhood. Oakdale, Driftwood, and I guess in that catchment, we can include John Booth as a community center. Because we have designated priority neighborhoods, basically, we don't charge, or the city doesn't charge, for programming in those community centers. Well, at least it didn't. It didn't charge kids, it didn't charge seniors, it didn't charge the users. Well, the welcome policy enhancement started off earlier in the year, where now we are charging adults for programs in those community centers. Do you know what's happened? Participation in those programs has dropped 61%. What does the enhancement mean? Enhancement means that 61%, or whatever that number is in terms of people, are using our community centers. Because we are not charging where we weren't charging before. It's not working. What this budget contemplates is not just charging the adults, but it's also about charging the kids and everyone else. Well, if that formula is the formula that, you know, is representative of what's happening, that's not going to work. Because we have community centers and we built them so that people can use them. Really, it's about locking them in, not enhancing the welcome policy where you keep them out. I don't mean to diminish what Stephen has presented or what Stephen has said. That's his job. He works for the finance department. He understands the budget. He tried to communicate it as best he could. I'm a politician. I can say whether I like it or not, and I don't like it. Because it doesn't do a heck of a lot for us. What that presentation didn't say, another one of the things that it didn't say, which in my view is so very, very important. We had worked for four years to basically build a tram line from Young Street eventually all the way out to the airport. We spent $15 million until the new administration took over. We did all the studies. We had actually done some of the work. You know, we had proceeded with some of the land acquisition. What did that tram line mean? It meant that we get to widen Finch. We keep the lanes of traffic. We make it work for cars and trucks and everyone else. And you put transit in the middle of the street, on its own dedicated right-of-way. And you get rid of all those buses. We have 800 meters' width of buses on Finch Avenue now. If you lined them up end to end, almost a kilometer long of buses that travel on Finch. We got to get them off. And we need to make Finch work because it's at gridlock. What that budget didn't say and what the presentation didn't say is that we'd lost that investment. As part of the Transit City, $8.2 billion provincially-funded Transit City program, not a nickel of which was city money, we were going to get almost $1 billion on Finch Avenue. Because that's what the council had approved. What the new administration did first day on the job is they canceled that Transit City program. They took those investments and they basically moved to Montaglington Avenue, burying a line that every expert, everyone says is a mistake. MetroLinks, provincial government, every transit, even the former chief general manager of the TTC came back and said, "What are you guys doing? The politics is trumping prudence. That's a mistake." And we need to find a way to bring some of those things back. So, I'm not going to speak at greater length because we also need to hear from all of you, but I just wanted to set the tone for you of what I believe this thing, this budget does. For us, for our community and for our city. And I don't believe that it's the way for us to move forward. It doesn't make us stronger. It doesn't make us better. Certainly doesn't make us, you know, more sustainable. So, thank you very much. And there's some really, really important dates that Stephen talked about. The 12th, the budget wrap-up, the 14th, the executive committee, and the 17th, when city council actually sits down and goes through the budget in detail and we start voting on the different elements of it. So I'm hoping that you all stay engaged. We have been successful, I believe, so far. Because of the engagement that we have had with people in meetings like this, in petitions, in phone calls, in emails, I believe that the library board, for example, listened on the library hour reductions, to some degree. We won part-battle there. To some degree, the TTC has backed off a little bit on some of its service reductions. They're contemplating some other measures. They're rethinking it. And we need to stay after some of these things. So that what you saw there doesn't come to pass, at least not in its entirety, because it'll be a long, 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 long time before we get some of these things back. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, councillor. I'd like to invite the staff, city staff, to take a seat at the front, if they'd like to come up. As they're moving up, I just want to go over again the format. If you have a comment and especially a question to make, you see a mic on each side. We have two volunteers that will be helping facilitate that. If you have any comments or questions, please come to the front and speak. We ask that you identify yourselves, and if you happen to be representing a group, for instance, please mention that group as well. We also, if many of you have signed petitions, you will note as you've come in that there were a series of petitions at the front pertaining to TTC service, protecting TTC service, as well as protecting free programming for youth at priority centers, and as well keeping the John Booth Arena open during the day. Many people in the audience here have signed the petition not just today, but in the days prior, have been circulating petitions, and we recognize the wonderful effort they've done. As well, this is very important to speak here, but it's very important, if you have the time, on the 12th of January, to come to City Hall and to make a deputation there. If you are interested in that, please, on your way out at the front table, give us your name, your address, your phone number, and tell us that you'd like to come on that day to make a deputation, and we'll give you all the information you need to be able to do that. It'll be very important and will be very effective to do so. So again, if you have any questions, please, we have the microphones on either side here. Come down and identify yourselves, and let's hear what you have to say.
Oh, you get to hold it? Okay. Thank you. I'll go first. I'm Joanne Sobey, and I'm executive director of Second Harvest. Second Harvest rescues excess perishable food and distributes it to over 200 social service agencies in the city, several of which are in this community, including Oakdale. I'm here to express our concern on behalf of the agencies and all of the people in this community that they serve. That cutbacks to community programs and the cost for user fees to go into recreation programs are in fact going to have a negative impact on people being able to eat. If you want to consider $2 admission fee to a recreation program for many families in this community, that actually will mean giving up a meal. And I think that's entirely unacceptable, that a family would have to choose between feeding their child dinner and sending them out to skate. So in addition to that, there are organizations that are going to have to cut back their hours. Our vested interest in that is we're not going to have organizations providing meal programs for children, breakfast programs, after-school programs, that in fact would be using our food, but because hours will need to be cut back, meal programs will be reduced as well. So I am asking that city council, please vote against the increases in recreation user fees, as well as in cutting back hours of community organizations that provide food programs. Eating food is a basic right of our community. Many people don't have the opportunity to eat and have access, and we need to ensure that the safety net is there in our community to support those people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Evan Liebovich. I lived in the, I live in the village, used to be involved in the community group now. I'm speaking barely on my own behalf. Anthony, I wanted to ask you a bit about Transit City. You sort of talk like it's dead, and I sort of would like a little bit more elaboration on that. The mayor wanted to build a Ferris wheel down on the lakeshore. That didn't happen. Clearly, the current administration, when they go into la-la land, there's a capability of being pushed back. Can you please tell me, or tell the folks here, what is being done to show some leadership in opposition to the stupid plans for Scarborough subway, for the stupid plans that aren't happening? You didn't mention Transit City also includes a streetcar line on Jane Street which goes through here. This is also critical. And I want you to give me, give an idea, what's happening in terms of reviving Transit City, making it happen? The administration has shown that they're not going to get their way on everything. And could you give a little bit more background on how we can make this happen again? Thanks.
Thank you very much for the question, Evan. We are all basically flabbergasted by how this has transpired. So the mayor, day one on the job, December 1st, or whatever that was, announces that he's canceling Transit City, and he's in favor of building subways. That cancellation now has come in with a price tag. A big, big, big price tag. Because the money for Transit City was provincial money. So we had spent monies along Finch Avenue, somewhere in the neighborhood of around $15 million. I know that because I worked with that one far more intimately. Shepherd Avenue had been underway, the link between the end of the subway at Don Mills and the Scarborough Town Center, that LRT line had been under construction for almost a year. So the cost of canceling that, people are sort of agreeing to that, that MetroLinks wants the city to pay, out of city money, is somewhere in the neighborhood of $70 million. Imagine that. Day one on the job, you basically flush $70 million down the drain. No, that's not. Well, I'm going to ask Stephen the question because there has to be something in the budget that speaks to the money that the city has to pick up. The 65, 70 million plus that they're basically negotiating, the TTC with MetroLinks. But what that number does not include is the losses and the claims that will come later. What I mean by that is, so as part of the contract, as part of the project, you go out and you buy cars. And you let out a contract. Well, that got canceled. The contractor's actually doing the work. You know, they bid on a job, they got the job, they expect they're going to have work for a couple of years on that project. You come along and you say, "Well, you're not doing that anymore. That's it. It's over today." Well, they come back later and say, "Well, hang on a minute, I lost something here. I didn't do other jobs because I took this one on." So those claims and those monies are not part of that 65, 70-plus million. So that could escalate to, well, you know, to 100, 150 million. We don't know how much money was basically flushed away on that. So we need to have an engaged debate on all of it. We have been asking for that engaged debate from the mayor and the administration. We have been denied it so far. Because the mayor has a memorandum of understanding with the provincial government, and he's also trying to develop a plan, a concurrent plan, to build subways and find a way to fund that subway construction. That hasn't materialized. So I'm hoping, like you are hoping, that when we have that debate, that Transit City and certainly some of the more prominent elements of Transit City come back on, such as Finch, such as Jane Street. Because it's so, so important for our neighborhoods, and it's so, so important for connecting us with the rest of the city and for the regeneration of, you know, community benefits that those big projects would invigorate. What's happening is we're waiting for the opportunity where they have to actually come in and ask for monies to do Eglinton and/or that the provincial government basically says, "Well, hang on a sec. Yeah, we have a memorandum of understanding, but you know what? We need, we can't, the mayor wants to just do Eglinton and bury the entire line under Eglinton and spend all $8.2 billion on Eglinton." But we're hoping that the provincial government at some point says, "But you know what? You got to go and you got to get council approval for this." So that when it does come to council, we will be able to have that debate, have that discussion, because it's so, so important for all of us. It just, I don't, you know, I've been around this work for quite some time, and I've never seen anything like this. Done in this way. Best I can answer.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Yolanda Kanzona, and I'm here to represent a group of seniors from John Booth. Now, this proposal that they want to close, give us less hours, close from 9:00 to 4:00, that's when we use the center. This is useful to us, the seniors of that area. And once they close it, they destroy the area for us. We use that center every day. There's English class from 9:00 to 1:00. Us ladies use it from 1:00 to 3:00. And then there's the seniors, the men, who enjoy themselves playing cards. We have the rights to enjoy this time of our lives now, not after 8:00 at night. We don't go out at night. We're going out in the afternoon and spend some time with our friends and enjoy this part of our lives, and now they want to take it away from us. Please, tell us, our mayor, we voted for him. He cut the budget, he was proposing to cut the fat, but he's cutting service, and this is not right. Thank you.
Thank you, Yolanda, and thanks again for all the work you've been doing with the women at John Booth and organizing against this. So thank you.
Just a quick response to that, Yolanda. John Booth is a really, really interesting example. Because a lot of the stuff that happens at John Booth is not on the city program. And it's kind of indicative of, you know, we build communities, community by community, neighborhood by neighborhood. And then what ends up happening is someone downtown looks at sort of the broad spectrum of stuff, looks on the program sheets, and doesn't see that at John Booth, that there's a very, very active community there on an ongoing basis, which does not cost the city any real money.
Closing from 9:00 to 4:00, it's very low saving. Now, this center is used all day. There's kids after school coming at 3:00. We use it 1:00, 2:00, 3:00. The man uses it all day. What's the saving of closing this center? It's ridiculous.
That was my point, exactly that. That it's so insignificant, given the amount of users at the center, and we need to find a way to convince the rest of the folks downtown to keep it open, for sure.
Before they propose to close a center, they should send somebody and see what's going on in this center all day long. There's a lady who teaches English from 9:00 till 1:00, adults' English class. Why would they want to take this away from this area? It's needed.
The short answer is, I agree with you. We need to convince 22 other people downtown to agree with us. Yeah. And we will work to do that.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. I am Dominique Parhamsky, just living in the Jean and Finch area. I am puzzled. Really, Jean and Finch is completely out for the transit. Where they were saying they're going to build the subway up to the university and so on, there is no stop on Jean at all. Now they want to reduce the buses on Finch. I need to say, why I don't take the TTC anymore? Because sometimes I need to wait that 48 full buses pass in front of me before I can climb in the bus to reach home. It takes me four times the time that it takes me in a car. So, that is one. Second thing, I just heard my husband was asking to someone about, "Did you saw the increase, $2.50 for the pension?" And I saw for the taxpayer, increase of 250%? What a difference. And even, so we are good to have our tax increase of 250% and to have less? Where that money is going to go? We need at least to have the same thing, or improve 2% 50 of everything. I find it really sad, because the point I wanted to make is that people who don't have work, who don't have a place to go, they're going to do mischief. They're going to gather on the street. They're going to go in the park and drinks. So why not increase the time for the people, we're going to say teenagers, because they are the ones who are the most, I cannot say that. Anyway, what I wanted to say, we need to put, to have more places for the teenagers and the young adults to go, to do sports and to, or to play collective games and not reduce the time.
Thank you. Next question?
Yes, Tom Keer with the York West Advocate newspaper. This is for Anthony. We've been talking about transit and many other things, but one of the most susceptible, you know, the young people, the young kids, and you mentioned about daycare, and that a number of the, many of the spaces that are going to be available will go, and if they go, it'll be very difficult to get them back. Could you talk further on that and maybe have some staff talk also? Thank you.
Hi. I'm Eva Smyrden from Toronto Children's Services. I can speak a little bit about childcare and the pressures we're facing. And in the childcare community, it's rather unique, because it's not only the city funding that's impacting childcare spaces, but there's a transition in the system, and a lot of children will be going to full-day kindergarten, and that's another piece that's impacting childcare and the spaces. Childcare is funded 80/20 provincially and city-funded, so there's a lot of different factors that impact both fee subsidy and the actual spaces in childcare. So I don't know if that answers your question at all, and it's different in every neighborhood. Full-day early learning is a five-year plan, and in 2012, about 50% of schools will offer full-day kindergarten, so all those four- and five-year-olds will leave the childcare system. So, all those four- and five-year-olds will leave the childcare system and go into full-day kindergarten. So, that will change the whole system of childcare, which currently serves zero to 10-year-old children.
So, Anthony's mentioned about that there's many spaces will go, but then, as you said, there's all-day kindergarten.
Mm-hmm.
But is that, so that, so is it not as serious as...
It may be. I think what the councillor was referring to were some statistics and maps that we did to demonstrate if there were no, if there was no action and no changes in the system, how many spaces may be lost. But Children's Services, we are working on things to mitigate the loss of spaces. But the system will shrink because four- and five-year-olds are going to full-day kindergarten. So, for sure, we're in a transitional period and things will change. We're hoping that the impact won't be, you know, too great, but it will change to younger, serving more younger children, infants to three-year-olds.
Hi, my name is Celia Smith. I came with different opinions, if I was to call it that way, in the sense that I made a deputation at City Hall. And I have questions, but then I was told that the councillors had no say in the decision that was made with the LRT line. So, I came saying, okay, so if I ask a question, does the councillors have say with those decisions that are being made there? If I was told there that they had no say about the LRT line? So, I wanted to ask Perusa that question. Is the councillors getting the chance to make the decisions that they are supposed to be making according for our communities?
Well, yeah, canceling Transit City, that was a, you know, that was the mayor's announcement. People need to understand how some of these things work or happen. The mayor gets elected. He gets elected with a massive majority. We all voted for him, right? On the heels of that, everybody else is scared. Because all of a sudden, this guy's ridden into town and he's got a massive train of support. And basically, so he steps up on that day with all of that support behind him and says, "We're cancelling Transit City." You know what everybody else does? Regretfully, ducks. Including the premier of the province of Ontario. He ducked. He got out of the way of that train. Well, sometimes, you know, leadership means you sort of step in front of it and you say, "Hang on a second, this train's headed in, it's on the wrong tracks. It's headed in the wrong direction." That didn't happen, Celia. And that's why we are faced with this quandary on Transit City. But with respect to the budget, yeah, we're gonna get a vote. We're gonna get a vote on the 17th, each and every councillor, on every element of it. There's gonna be a ton of motions on the floor of council. Motions having to do with John Booth, motions having to do with the welcome policy, motions, you know, on every element of the city's operations. And then 44 councillors and one mayor, we're gonna vote. And yes, the mayor's office is going to do what they've been doing right from the get-go. They're going to put as much pressure on those people that they think are allies of theirs and their friends as they can. You know, we use, you know, a metaphor. They're gonna drive the screws in hard and then they're gonna try to put people to their side. Some of us, we're gonna have to find a way to resist that. And say, "This train is headed in the wrong direction." And we need to find a way to nudge it back on the tracks in the right direction, in the direction we want it to go in. So, yes, we are gonna have a say. That was a long answer for a short question. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Celia. And thanks for making a deputation at City Hall. Again, I just want to repeat, if anyone here wants to come to City Hall and speak, just as Celia has done, on the way out, at our table, give us your name. We'll put you down. We'll give you all the information you need to be able to come to City Hall and speak on any issue with regards to the budget. So, thanks for the question.
I am representing in behalf of the Filipino community in this area. As a matter of fact, I am, I have a sports program at Driftwood Community Centre. Now, as what I have heard from the councillor, that adults will be charged already. So, you know, I am a user of that centre since 1977 and until now. And if you will charge us, so nobody will come in anymore. And that centre will be totally closed because of that user piece which will be in charge. Now, what's the use of increasing the 2.5% property tax, the increase of the 10 cents for the TTC? What benefits could, what benefits could the community get from the council? What benefits could we receive? That's what I am talking right now. This will be the situation then, what happened to this city? Can you please give us, verify something to us so that all these people here will be satisfied?
I don't disagree with you. I think it's wrong-headed. I think we're headed in the wrong direction. Absolutely right. We should, we need our community centres to be welcoming for people, welcoming to your users, to your basketball program at Driftwood and all of those things that you do there. It shouldn't be about keeping you out. And we need to find a way to try to do that. And I agree with you. We need to find a way. I wanna, I wanna just, very briefly, I'm gonna try to explain something, okay? Because sometimes, we get lost in these big explanations. There was a very, very important number that Stephen showed in his chart. The number was, it's a magic number, 15, okay? What's that number? That's the tax-supported debt charges in the operating budget. It's not quite 15 yet. It's somewhere around 13 and a half. But the magic number is 15. They don't want to get to 15. So, when they look at the 15, they took out $2.5 billion worth of capital projects out of the budget. Okay, fair enough. That's what, if Stephen can nod, it's, we're pretty much on track. And if I say anything that's not accurate, please jump in, okay? Because I'm just going by memory. So, 15. Here's what the 15 number does not, the story it doesn't say. In that 15, we have a Spadina subway extension, okay? So, if the Spadina subway in total costs $2.5 billion, the city's portion of that, the city of Toronto, the TTC, the city of Toronto, which basically underwrites it, portion of that, is around $400 million, just a little under $400 million. So, there's $400 million in that big number, which connects to the 15. What doesn't the 15 say? I'll tell you what it doesn't say. It doesn't say that for that modest investment that the city makes, it basically untaps $2.1 billion from provincial, federal, and York region money as an investment in this city. The story it doesn't say. That's huge. Imagine if someone came to you and said, "Okay, listen, tell you what. You want to do a renovation on your house? You're adding to the capital value of your property, right? Of your portfolio, of your holdings. You want to do a $100,000 addition to your home." They come along and they say, "Tell you what, you pay $15,000, we'll put in the 85 and you don't owe us a nickel later, but you get $100,000 of the asset at the end of the day." That's what that 15 doesn't say, the value that we get. The 15, the other story that the 15 doesn't say is this, that that subway, once it starts operating, generates money. That's not all there as part of that 15, which is really not 15. What's not there as well? That when that subway comes through, it adds new assessment, new growth. It allowed growth at Keel and Finch, it allowed growth at York University, it allowed growth at Janus Steel's at 407 and all the way up to Jane and Walmart. It will add new assessment. That 15 doesn't have that number, doesn't tell that story. So that when you add all of those elements, that 15 comes way down. But you know what? They have made that 15 so firm and so hard and it drives the entire budget. And when it drives the budget and it closes your community centre, that's what it does. That story's not there. They don't want to hear that story when you tell it to them. But that's an important story that needs to be told as well. Because when you mine down in those numbers, that 13 and a half really isn't 13 and a half, really isn't a magic number. Many of us believe that magic number is far, far lower. So, there is space there for us to be able to do some of these things. Sorry.
Next question?
My is not a question, but something that's an appeal. That is, my name is John Boating and I'm a member of an association that uses Ogdele Committee Centre called Car Research and Recreational Co of Toronto. And what I've known and I've seen and I've heard, that the federal government, as well as the regional government, is doing their best to help this Jane and Finch community. It's prone to so many things that because of that, the police are doing their part. And because of that, all the community, they are being told to open lead, to help the case, to engage them so that they go out from the street. And the province of Ontario is prepared to help to keep these people or these kids out on the street. And they are doing everything, as well as the federal government. So, if the city council is finding problem, I suggest this area in particular should be left alone, in the sense that it has its ups and downs. And everybody's trying to do its best to bring this area to where it should be. Our kids need help. This area, a lot of people are either single families and are very, find it very hard to pick up and meet. And therefore, charging their children to come and play there, as the first lady said, they are going to stop. And I heard also, this thing has happened before somewhere and as a result, it has dropped about 60%. But these facilities are built for people to use them for the betterment of the country. It helps them facilitate so many things. We meet there as a group to bring friendship, to bring unity, to help one another in term of needs, which maybe the government may not be there to provide. We do so many things for people who are involved. And that's why we meet. And if this facility is cut off, it means you know, we have nowhere to meet and we are going to stop. And some people are going to be what? In problem, one or the other. And therefore, I'm appealing that. Especially Jane and Finch area, Ogdele community and the communities in this area should be left alone and we should be given the grace or the, as a priority because of the area, that we don't have to pay nothing. It should be left alone alone. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, the meeting, this portion of our meeting will be wrapping up very soon. So, if you have any questions or comments, please line up at one of these mics and at least indicate that you'd like to speak. Otherwise, we'll be wrapping up. Okay, anybody else that will be lining up? Okay, so these will be the final two comments for the evening. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I have two questions. One is suggesting that Jane and, sorry, Finch and Toblerary, we have a problem when you're turning left into Toblerary. Is it possible to have a right single turn?
These sort of questions will deal with, one of councillor Pruce's staff, like myself, can assist you on that sort of matter, if it's not budget-related. So, we'll discuss that at the end.
The other question is about the TTC. About a month, I travel to Mississauga at the end. I go from Islington subway to Mississauga where I want and come back with one fare. But in here, in the metro, if you go to Jane and Wilson and come back in five minutes, you have to pay back another fare, which is quite difficult sometimes. Is it possible to have the way Mississauga is doing in a fare system? Thank you very much.
I really can't respond to that. I pretty well represent the construction for the, I don't know, for the extension, the extension, so I can't really answer that particular question.
But the answer to the question is, can we?
Yes, we can. And in fact, the TTC is looking at, is looking at the technology to be able to do that. Part of the problem is, in integrating all of the transit systems within the region, is there's so many different ones, right? You have Mississauga, you have York Region and so on. It has always been a challenge because each one of the transit systems is funded differently. They're supported by the province at different levels. They, all of them have different challenges. So, it's been difficult getting them all together. But they're moving towards smart card technology where those issues will become easier to deal with. Does that mean that it'll only be one fare? It would be nice to be able to have one fare where you could, you know, go from, you know, Pickering to Oakville and, you know, use the different systems and not have to pay again. The challenges there are that you need a regional transit authority that, you know, sort of will take the bull by the horn and make that happen on a region-wide basis so that, so that, you know, the TTC, the YRT, Mississauga Transit, Brampton Transit, Amarkham and so on, you know, they're, they're all funded and supported equally by the same regional agency where some of those issues might be able to be resolvable. But for the immediate future, no.
But they all talk to each other except for the TTC. You can get on a Presto card and go from Oshawa to Burlington, okay? If you go around York Region, you don't touch Toronto, you can get there on using your own card.
Evan, that is exactly part of the issue as it relates... Evan, that, Evan, that is exactly part of the, the issue as it relates to different funding levels for each transit system. I, I, you know, I don't, I'm not quite sure of what the subsidy level is now for, for the TTC in terms of what the, the difference is between the fare box and what the ride actually costs, but I can tell you this, that the regional transit systems are supported very differently by the province than is the TTC. So it's, they're very, they're very, they're working on very different levels that way. And that's why it's very difficult to get them to sit down together and, and hammer out that kind of, an agreement where they have to do that amongst themselves without having some kind of, you know, hopefully MetroLinks will provide some of the solutions to those issues. One can hope. I'm sorry I don't have a, I don't have a better answer. Just want to, because I didn't answer Adolfo's question directly. And Adolfo's question was this, the raising taxes, 2.5%, the raising, you know, user fees, parks' user fees, I believe, and Stephen will correct me, there are about $300 million worth of new monies in this budget, the presentation that you saw, between taxes, user fees, fines, you know, fines they're going up to, that was on the news, what, yesterday? It's been in the news over the last couple of days. Well, they're, they're nickeling and diming you everywhere, right? And it's, it's somewhere to the tune of about $300 million bucks. And, and why? To some degree because we have some of those magic numbers built into the budget that are kind of, you know, they're, they're firm in where they are and, and I think that there's, there's some flexibility there and we could, we could reintroduce some of these programs and, and without, without having to, you know, to, to increase taxes or, or beyond what they're doing or, or some of the other things. I believe we could do that, okay?
Thank you.
Sorry.
And our last question?
Hi, I'm Wanda McNeven, I'm here as a community resident this evening. As I'm sitting here listening to this, you know, I, I know Anthony, you're going to vote in a way that this community wants the votes to happen in terms of supporting community services and the community centres and so on. I'm confident that Maria Jumari, also in this area, will, will vote in the way that this community needs to be voted. Not so sure George Mamalidi, who also represents this area, will, will give us any support at all. However, I, I really believe there's a bigger picture here. This is not the first time that our community is going to feel the impacts of cuts. And in the newspaper today, apparently the, in the Drummond Report is saying that there could be possibly up to 30% cuts provincially, not to education or health, but social service and so on. So I think this is the beginning of a storm that's happening. And I guess, I'm sitting here and I'm, I'm really delighted that you called this meeting and I look at everybody here and I think, this is a really great group of community residents who care about this community. I think part of the challenge that we have in Jane and Finch is that we don't often have enough time or find the time to come together as residents to say what we want progressively. And I say that because if cuts or things are going to happen in other parts of the city, like Rosedale or other parts, you bet that those voices would be heard loud and clear. I'm not so sure the voices of the Jane Finch residents are heard loud and clear. Many people work really hard in this community, there's many small groups meeting, there's groups fighting away for, for different things, but I don't think as we come across as a united voice in this community. And I think that if we're going to be facing these cuts over, over the time, because I'm not so sure that the middle group of councillors are going to vote in a way that we want them to vote. They may and we may win some, but I'm not sure they're there yet. So I think there's going to be fighting that's going to happen over the next few years. So I would want to put it out to you guys to first of all, say thank you for bringing a group together, but how do we find other ways for our voices to come together so that as residents, we can be fighting louder and harder? So.
Thank you.
Wanda, thank you very much. That's, that's always the challenge. You know, we, a month ago, a month and a half ago, we had a similar meeting at the, I believe it was here, in the library, yeah, different room regarding the, the library cuts. We had a much smaller gathering of people, but it's, it's the way we share information, so we have an email campaign. Yesterday, we were out canvassing in, you know, at the corner of Jane and Finch around the TTC changes and the TTC cuts and handing flyers out to people and getting them to call people, councillors like George Mamalidi, you know, some of those, some of those votes that we might be able to influence on some of these things, we were doing that. There was a great group of volunteers and we were trying to raise awareness. So we had been sort of systematically trying to conduct that camp. People here are, people here are really, really busy and, you know, you call a meeting and you get some folks to turn out, you know, because there's some, some issues that are of particular interest to, to people. But by and large, you know, people are busy with their lives and they're doing the kinds of things they need to do and they leave it up to us, but we also need you. And, and because, because that's how you make the campaign very, very effective and this is very much part of that. And I didn't want to get to a budget vote without calling a meeting like this where people got an opportunity to see what, what the budget looks like, have it explained by the finance folks and then have a political explanation attached to that as well, that I'm, you know, entitled to give and to offer. And people will take that away and as Tom suggested, there are some petitions out in, in the back around some of these issues. We also have some other information about what you might, us, might be able to do to help us out. Come down and, and, you know, attend the committee and speak to the, to the councillors and speak to the mayor directly about, about some of these programs and so on. Be able to phone, certainly email, all of those things collectively, I believe, generate a campaign. So all of us that don't agree with some of the things that they're trying to do, that's, that's what we're trying to do, to motivate people and that's in part why we are here tonight, so that we can share the information and hopefully we'll get some of you to react to that and help us out in the, in the, in the fight to retain some of these, some of these services that we've worked really, really hard for years to, to obtain.
So before I call on councillor Prusa to give a final, final word, as your emcee, my name again is Tom Rakosavich, I want to thank you very much. These are tough times, the weather's cold, thank you so much for coming out. Thanks to staff and thanks to our volunteers who helped facilitate this evening's event. I again would like to remind you, many of you that came in, there are petitions at the back, three petitions, one pertaining to TTC service and keeping TTC service, one pertaining to keeping free programming for youth and children at priority community centres and another for keeping John Booth Arena open during the day. Again, I also want to encourage everyone here, if you have time or you know somebody that would like to come to City Hall and make a deputation, it's your final chance. On January 12th, Executive Committee is meeting at City Hall. Come to our table here, we'll sign you up, we'll make sure that you get on the speakers' list, we'll tell you where you need to go, what you need to do and it does make a difference. It's important that City Hall hears your voice, not just at this meeting that councillor Prusa has called, but also there. So we encourage you to put your name down and to show up and represent your community. So thank you very much for coming out tonight.